Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission for January 17th, 2019, to order. Could I have a roll call of the members, please?
Alan Bucknum.
Present.
Emery Dorsey.
Here.
Janet Leo.
Here.
Scott El.
Here.
Richard Peterson.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Vivian Voss.
President.
And Daniel Larson is absent tonight.
Thank you. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of November 15th.
I make the motion to approve the minutes of November 15th.
All right, is there any discussion on the minutes? All right, I'll call for a vote, please.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda tonight. If you're here to speak on an agenda subject, you'll have that opportunity. Do we have anybody today, Lauren? Okay. Anybody not on the list who just has something they want to say? No, okay. All right, we'll open up the public hearing then. We have, one, two, three, four cases tonight. First case up, it's case number WS-1801 and WZ-1813. This is an application filed by Wonderland Homes for approval of a 56-lot subdivision and for approval of a specific development plan for property located, for properties owned, planned residential development, PRD, and located at 5372 to 5392 Quail Street. Can I have the staff report, please?
Yeah, staff is recommending continuance, and I'll just, I'll briefly explain why that is. The ODP, the zoning document that was approved for this property, required that, let me back up, the ODP anticipated that certain portions of the streets, notably Quail, would be located outside of our jurisdiction in Arvada. As such, we required that, because that's out of our control as part of this plating process, that those right-of-way be in place prior to scheduling the public hearing before Planning Commissioner City Council. That had been scheduled for a city council hearing in Arvada on January 7th. The attorneys for the city of Arvada identified some title issues in those portions of right-of-way that were going to be dedicated, and as such, pulled those off the agenda. So, we're gonna, we're recommending that we pull it off. We can't hold a public hearing because that condition from the zoning hasn't been met. We debated whether to schedule it for a date certain. We decided that since we don't know when Arvada is going to be accepting that right-of-way, we don't want to keep the public kind of at bay, not knowing when the hearing's going to be, and have multiple continuances. So what we're recommending is that it be postponed indefinitely, and then we'll just reschedule it and do a full new public notice. So, the adjacent property owners will get notified again and won't have to, at that point, guess whether or not the right-of-way is in place and the hearing's going to be held. So, it's mostly, that approach is for the convenience of the public who might want to attend.
Okay, all right. With that in mind, would someone like to put forward a motion to continue that case indefinitely?
I'll make the motion to continue the case indefinitely.
A second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion on that continuance motion? All right, let's vote, please.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Okay. Second case tonight, case number WS-18-07. This is an application filed by TH Yarrow Gardens LLC for approval of a 90-lot subdivision for properties-owned mixed-use neighborhood and a planned residential development located at 4255 Yarrow Street and 7955 West 42nd Avenue. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Lauren McLaughlin, Planner with the City of Wheatridge Community Development Department, and I'll be making the staff presentation tonight. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and this presentation. The property is within the city of Wheatridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and the Planning Commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So we'll start with an aerial. North is to the top of your screen, and the subject site is outlined in blue. It's located between 41st and 44th Avenue with Wadsworth over there to the east. It's a project that we've been referring to as Yarrow Gardens for the last several years. This is obviously an older aerial. If you've been by the site, those greenhouses have been removed and the site has been remediated. It was contaminated from pesticide and fuel. The total size of the project is over five acres in size, and you can see from this aerial just some of the land uses in the area. So, starting to the west, this is Happiness Gardens, owned by the city. It's a community garden property, pretty established neighborhood, Wilmore Davis Elementary School, another neighborhood to the south, multifamily apartments, and then a variety of commercial uses along 44th. This is now a completed project, assisted living. There's dental vision offices, car wash, variety uses up there. The zoning in this area actually, actually pretty well matches the land uses. So, the R2 portion, which is that greenish-yellow color, is the neighborhood and the school. Again, working counterclockwise, the apartments are zoned R3, that's a multifamily zone district. The commercial uses are zoned mixed-use commercial and commercial 1. And then the subject property has split zoning, mixed-use neighborhood, and a planned residential development. The Planning Commission may recall hearing those two cases for the zone changes which occurred in the last two years. So, again, we've processed a variety of cases related to this Yarrow Gardens project, which is for, a project that will result in 89 townhomes. The majority of the property was rezoned in 2017 by a previous property owner. At the time, they only owned that portion that was rezoned to MUN. Subsequent to that zone change, they acquired that southwest corner, and that portion was then rezoned to planned residential development. And at that same time, the entire property was plotted. It was actually plotted in two parts. So, there was a filing 1 for the MUN portion and a second filing or second plat for the PRD portion. And then after that, the property was sold to our current applicant. So, the entity that owned it and entitled it through 2017, 2018, was an entity that sort of specialized in those entitlements and, more importantly, specialized in environmental remediation. So, there was always a plan to partner with a builder who would purchase it. That was Thrive Home Builders, who's the current owner and applicant. And understandably, when they ended up purchasing it, there were a few things that needed to change based on their business model and their building designs. Surprisingly few, actually, with that change. Just one photo of the site. It's a difficult site to photograph. If you've been out there, you've seen that they're doing work. They have a grading permit. So, again, all of those approvals are in place, so they're ready to move forward with construction of the project, with the exception of asking for this minor change to the design. So, this is an image of the site plan for the project. I mentioned 89 townhomes. There's also an existing single-family home in that southwest corner. It's a, it's a project where the townhomes are grouped in buildings ranging from three units to six units. There's access from Yarrow and from 42nd and that internal loop road that's an alley-loaded design. The reason for this replat request is really related to the southern half of the project down here. So, we'll look at that a little bit closer. At the top of your screen is the original design we just looked at, but those, the units are shaded in blue. And you can see that the original design included buildings that had three units, five units, and six units. As I mentioned, with the change in ownership and the sort of slight change in building design and building models, the southern, or the bottom site plan is the proposed modification. So, instead of the triplexes, the same number of units has been distributed among buildings that include four, four and five units each. With that change, these were all plotted as townhome lots, so that the lot line needs to shift. And you can see the sidewalk alignment is a little bit different from the original to the proposed site plan. So, the tract where the sidewalk is located also needs to shift. We talk a little bit about subdivision 101 every time we look at a plat. Subdivision regulations are found in Article 4 of the zoning code. And a plat is a technical document that essentially prepares land for development. And, as the commission is aware, it's not changing the zoning, it's not changing the permitted uses. We typically don't even look at site plans when we're reviewing a subdivision plat. In this sort of rare instance, we shared the site plan because I think that visual best explains the reason for the replat. The original subdivision created lot lines. It dedicated the right-of-way that we need for the project. It created easements. We already looked at traffic and drainage reports. The purpose again of this replat is really just to adjust those few lot lines. When you're processing a re-subdivision or replat, there's no different process to go through. So, we have to go through the same process as any subdivision, new or replat. And in this case, because more than six lots are affected, we process it as a major subdivision. So, you will hear tonight, and you'll be making a recommendation of approval to City Council, who are here on February 11th. So, it's a two-sheet document. The first sheet is our standard notes and declarations and signature blocks. The meat of this one is on the second sheet, which is the graphic. I think traditionally, we often provide a vacation sheet or a sheet that removes lot lines. In this case, for simplicity, there's a note on the cover that says, "All the lot lines previously created for the townhomes are hereby removed." And now we have one single graphic that we can refer to sort of from now on into perpetuity that shows all of the townhome lot lines very cleanly. The northern half wasn't affected, but again, just for simplicity, we want to show all of that. It doesn't include the single-family home. So, this, this dark boundary looks a little bit different than the boundary I showed you previously, which coincides more with the project. Looking again at that southern portion, so the only lot lines changing are for those southern units, which again are shaded in blue. The yellow-orange shading that just popped up are those few tracks that are also changing. So, if you can visualize, again, where that sidewalk location was, it moved a little bit, sidewalk and landscaping on the west side of the project, and then a slight change in the width of this alley on the east side of the project. Those tracks also include utility and drainage easements. And with the shifting widths of those tracks, the easements were also shifted. But, again, generally, no change to any other easement or right-of-way dedication or any other component of this project. With all cases, we send this on referral. It's been an active project, as you saw, for a few years. So, it was not a surprise that most of our utility districts didn't have any concerns or comments on the project. The applicant has been working with these districts throughout design and as they've moved into construction. Internally, we, we tend to have the most comments on a subdivision, so there's a few red lines and typos that still need to get cleaned up. So, we've made that a condition of approval, that we have sort of the final form, clean version, before it goes to the city council hearing. There was a two-week public posting period leading up to today, and we didn't receive any comments from the neighbors. So, ultimately, we are recommending approval of the subdivision plat, again, with just that one condition, that those few revisions be addressed before February. That's the end of my comments. I do have my colleague, Jordan Jeffries, representing Public Works here in the audience, and the applicant is also available for any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. Let's see. Questions for staff? Why don't we start over here with Commissioner Weaver? Do you have any questions? Commissioner Leo?
No.
Commissioner Voss?
I do not.
All right. Does anybody, Scott?
Yeah, speaking of traffic, I still have concerns for this project. I haven't heard a real definitive solution to the traffic. My concern is that there's, I'm guessing there's probably about two cars per townhome. At 89, gives us maybe 180 cars. And I know before the addition of the 16 townhomes, I think it was said, and this is coming from my memory, maybe 750 daily peak trips. My concern is such that traveling down, and I'm very, very, very familiar with this because I use this road probably every day, that my concern is that traffic going north on Yarrow, it's one lane. And so, if that car decides it wants to take a left on the 44th, everything behind it stops. There's no traffic movement. And so, adding 180 vehicles of concentration to this area is going to be a huge problem. And if you go straight, so it's like if a car goes straight or goes left, it's waiting for traffic on West 44th before it can do that. I think it was Mr. Jeffries, I talked to, is it Mr. Jeffries? I know we had, I talked about this before, about, you know, if you could add, you know, like a right-turn-only lane and make it like two lanes on the right side. I don't know if that's possible because there's an existing drive right there for that little retail. And I do have a lot of concerns, because I know what's going to happen is, it's going to start backing up, and then all the, all that traffic is going to have to go out towards either 41st, past the school, because there is no direct connection on the north side of the school going through the Happiness Gardens. They're going to have to go through the 41st, or they're going to have to go out Allison Street to get out of this jam. And it's, it jams up with just two or three vehicles. I can't imagine adding another 180 to what it is now. And so, one thought I did have, because I don't want to just throw problems on, is that would the city consider just making that a right-turn-only? And so, there is no, there is no left-west movement, there is no straight. You cannot cross 44th straight, because if the car is going straight, it's waiting for cars on the west so they can go through. It's much, much easier to take a right turn going east onto 44th. But if you're going left or straight, there's a problem. And it's a problem right now. With 180 additional vehicles, this is going to be a huge problem. And that's why my concern is the phone is going to be ringing off the hook of like, okay, what, now what do we do? And I'd rather try to get ahead of this than wait until we actually do have a big problem. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, any questions for staff? Okay. Do you guys want to address Commissioner Holmes' concerns at all regarding the traffic?
We have done a traffic study, and we've kind of talked about this before. There will be a light added at 41st and Wadsworth when the Wadsworth project is finished in a couple of years. And certainly not everybody in the subdivision is going to be traveling north on Yarrow. There'll be other, you know, means to get out of the neighborhood. So, we think a lot of the traffic will maybe go down to 41st. There has been some discussions in Public Works about potentially connecting 42nd through Wadsworth, and at this point, that's just kind of, you know, an idea. You know, all the parties in the, that own that property would have to be okay with that. So, we've also looked at potentially, in the future, studying Yarrow and 44th and possibly putting in a right-turn lane at some point. But, you know, you can't really add a signal at that intersection because with the Wadsworth widening, it's, it's just going to not work with that new layout for the intersection. So, it's basically, Public Works has come to the conclusion that it's, at this point, it's not going to cause a major impact. But, you know, we will look at some of these things in the future.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to make a statement or be available for questions?
Yes.
Well, let me ask, let's see. Commissioner Peterson, do you have questions for applicant? Any over on this side? Mr. Dorsey? Any questions over here for the applicant? Okay, I guess you're in the clear. Thank you. All right. Do we have anybody signed up to speak on this particular case? Okay, great. Would anybody who didn't sign up like to address some questions to the commission, questions, concerns? Would you, yes, if you can just come up and state your name and address for, for the benefit of our minutes and our audience, and ask your questions or state your concerns, please?
Yes, my name is Roger Lasher, and I'm a Wheatridge resident. And we also, L-O-E-C-H-E-R. One gentleman just said, "We would need permission from the owners of the property on the apartment to extend 44th or 42nd." And I'm here to tell you, the owners will not let you extend that street, okay, through their property. Mark, what's his name, said, "Well, if the Grau property ever gets developed, we're going to make him put in a street." Not fair to the property owners that they want to run a street through for these, this project, okay? Same thing, if they want to take and put a right turn in on 44th, they're going to take out more than half of the parking spaces for those businesses along 44th, from Yarrow to Wadsworth. Not fair to those people, okay? Now, the history on, on Yarrow Street is, my father-in-law, George Grau, gave that property to the city, okay, so they could put a street there. He also gave most of 44th from Yarrow to Wadsworth to the city so they could put a street there. He also gave them property from 44th to Three Acre Lane, basically, to the city. You guys are whittling that down to nothing practically. If you're saying, "Well, we're going to take and pay you for the property," that's fine. That's the value of the property today. But, the Grau family has been on that corner for more than 100 years, okay? Now, if the money, they would have gotten money for them, and they didn't get no money for what they gave the city. I mean, no big money, like $3 maybe at the most. If, if they would have taken that money and bought, what was it, for $3 or $5? That property is worth a lot of money to the city as a tax-generating basis. They're going to take probably 10,000 to 15,000 square foot of property for extending Wadsworth, widening Wadsworth, and, and 44th. That property is 10,000 square foot of a commercial building in the city of Wheatridge, okay? Got a problem taking property. You can't take that property. That's the best corner, one of the best corners in Wheatridge. You can't take that best property and find the best property someplace else. Smarter move, I think, would have been running the street, running the driveway to this complex out on, what do we got? Ammons. Could have run that through the city, City Garden. City wouldn't have had to buy any property. You've already got a street light on Ammons, okay? And you split the traffic up going east and west off on 44th. When you get to running the traffic on Yarrow, you've got a block before you hit a major intersection. You've got, from Ammons, you've got four blocks. You've also got a light in the middle of Ammons and Wadsworth, okay? So, now you're going to have three stoplights close together. Somebody is going to say, "Those are too close to have stop signs, three stoplights apart." I don't think anybody has studied what's going to happen with the traffic pattern. It's going to screw the works up. I have no problem putting 90 apartments there, okay, if you can take and handle 180 cars. Just think if they all went to work at the same time. That's three-quarters of mile of traffic. Where's it going to back up to? Where's it going to go? You're going to have everybody on the other side of, of 43rd screaming like crazy one night in here. They're not going to be happy with it. They haven't taken and done, I believe, a better idea of running traffic through the city. They haven't done that. As far as I know, I'm not an engineer, I just got some common sense. And I think most of you people do too. You're saying, "Where the hell those cars going to go?" They're going to go up and down the neighborhood, and then the whole neighborhood's going to be upset. And it's going to be a bigger problem. If and when the corner property on 44th and Wadsworth gets developed, where are those traffic going to go? If they ever develop Three Acre Lane, where's that traffic going to go? They haven't, they haven't thought far enough down the road, as far as I'm concerned.
All right. Thank you for, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment or ask some questions on this case? Yes, come on up. Thanks.
I just have a few questions. My name is Renner, B-R-E-N-N-E-R. B-R-E-N-N-E-R. I don't live in Wheatridge, but I have property in Wheatridge. My address is in Evergreen. Very simple questions. Are these for sale townhomes or for rent townhomes?
Well, I'll, I'll make that note. I don't think that's germane to this particular, to a subdivision case, but what other questions do you have?
Basically, that's about it. It sounds like a lot of people talking there like they're expecting 100 days on ours, all at the same time. I just don't see that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak or make a comment? All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain some discussion or a motion. Well, we can, we might want to make a, make a motion, and we can discuss it. Unless you have other questions for staff or the applicant.
Well, yeah.
Okay, all right.
If I could ask, what's the, if this seems to be such a street traffic concern, do, can we reverse the development not happening until the roads, traffic gets taken care of first? What, how does that work?
No, I mean, tonight's case is just about the lot line adjustments. So, you know, we didn't, in advance of this application or as a part of this application, we didn't reopen that traffic study and the site design details. Obviously, we, to the extent that the sidewalks shift, we've looked at that. But, there's not really a way to unwind the zoning and previous plating and site plan approvals that we've had. So, we share, we share that concern about what could happen. And as Mr. Jeffries said, it's something we'll continue to be monitoring. I think we have 30 to 32 feet of asphalt width between the flow lines at Yarrow and 44th. So, it's, it's in our collective best interest that this functions appropriately. But typically, we wouldn't expand the street in advance of a development. It sort of comes one in the same, so.
And we've already approved the whole development without having this...
Correct. It was certainly a significant topic of discussion, both in this room with the Planning Commission and with the city council, for all of the related applications on the project. So, it's definitely on our radars also.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, the, from what I recall, the, the number of units has not changed at all?
That's correct. No change.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
I make a, I make a motion, option A1, move to recommend approval of case number WS-18-07, a request for approval of an 89-lot subdivision on property-zoned mixed-use neighborhood, MUN, and planned residential development, PRD, and located at the northwest corner of Yarrow Street and West 42nd Avenue approximately 4255 Yarrow for the following reasons. All agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at developers' expense. And number two, the requirements of Article 4 of the zoning and development code have been met. And I have no other...
And I have no other.
With the following conditions?
Yeah. Okay. One, the revisions requested by Public Works Department related to labels, notes, and typos shall be addressed prior to the City Council public meeting, hearing. That's it.
I'll second.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right. Okay, next case is case number WZ-18-28. This is an application filed by Go Farm for approval of a specific development plan amendment for properties owned planned commercial development to allow an accessory structure for local food share distribution located just across the street here at 7495 West 29th Avenue. Could I get the staff report, please?
So again, for the record, Lauren McLaughlin, planner with the Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. And for this case, I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and the Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. So again, we'll start with an aerial image. North is to the top. Wadsworth is sort of in the middle of the screen there with the subject property outlined, again, in blue. The site is just over four acres in size here, and it was developed maybe about four years ago by Metro Community Providers Network, MCPN. They're a nonprofit healthcare provider with about a dozen locations, maybe, in the metro area. This particular location, they provide family practice, pediatrics, dental, behavioral services, sort of a variety of, of healthcare services. And MCPN in general specializes in serving the underinsured, so typically families and seniors. This is an excerpt from the zoning map, and you can see the left portion of your screen is unshaded. That black line on the west side of Wadsworth is the municipal boundary. So, that Crown Hill Cemetery across the street there is actually an unincorporated Jeffco. The colors that you're seeing on the Wheat Ridge side are a variety of residential zone districts surrounding the subject property. So, the darker yellow color is actually City Hall, where we are today, zoned residential two. The neighborhood is predominantly zoned residential 1A. That's a single-family zone district and a little bit more R2 to the top. The subject site is zoned planned commercial development. We'll talk a little bit more about that PCD in a minute. But I want to introduce the request first. It's a, it's a unique request. The applicant tonight comes from an organization called Go Farm Co-op. They're a nonprofit as well, who specializes in providing access to fresh local food. They organize a food share program. It's typically called a community-supported agriculture, or CSA. It's a program where folks purchase a share of produce for a season and then typically pick it up weekly throughout that growing season. Go Farm often partners with healthcare providers to co-locate because of their shared focus on public health. So, you're seeing at the bottom of the screen, a few images of their existing locations elsewhere in the metro area, two in Golden, one in Narvada. And their business model is to utilize a refrigerated, painted, half-size shipping container. As with most CSA pickup locations, they're typically open for a very limited number of hours per week. So, at some of these other locations, it's about six hours total in a given week, usually across two days for a few hours at a time. So, a shareholder would come during their designated time, within that time window, pick up their produce, and then be gone shortly thereafter. So, a plan development, it's comprised of two different documents. The outline development plan establishes the zoning and the development standards, setbacks, heights, building standards, and the specific development plan establishes the specific site plan. So, for this particular property with that MCPN facility, the ODP was approved in 2011, the SDP in 2013. And the purpose of a plan development in Wheat Ridge is usually to promote a unique or creative development, something that may not otherwise be allowed. And previously, we only use plan developments on properties that were over an acre in size. So, we have a number of them in the city. City code actually has a limitation on the use of shipping containers in our accessory structure standards. So, currently, we would allow them to function sort of as a shed only on industrially zoned properties. Because the site is a plan development, we can entertain this more creative use of a shipping container. And the ODP for this property specifically allows accessory uses or structures that are customarily associated with the permitted use. I don't know that CSA pickup is customarily associated with the permitted use, but we've looked at it, and with the shared public health focus and the ODP's intent for sort of a medical public health campus, we thought it fell into that category. The SDP amendment process can go one of two ways. Either it's something that can be reviewed by staff because it's a minor tweak in maybe landscaping or parking. But with this being a new building and sort of a new use, we decided that it exceeded the scope of what staff can review pursuant to the code, and it would come to Planning Commission for just a single hearing. So, that's what we're looking at tonight. It's two sheets, the proposed amendment. The first sheet, you know, usually breezes by its notes and certificates. But in this case, the first sheet is actually sort of the meat of this amendment. So, the allowed uses are enumerated here, just as they are in the ODP. But what's new as a part of this amendment is the text that's outlined in red, eligible on the right side, but blown up here on the left. And what's been written in are standards specifically for local food share distribution, specifically for this, what this user has proposed. So, accessory structure standards of a shipping container limited to one and a maximum length of 20 feet, that's that half-size. So, by way of reference, 20 feet is usually the length of a parking stall. It's, the SDP says that it must be painted. To that end, the paint and murals are permitted on all sides. We've addressed signs on here, just because they are atypical on an accessory structure. So, clarified that signs would be allowed on the east and west sides, and that the sign size would be limited to one and a half square feet per linear foot. That's a little bit of a deviation from our standard sign code. But again, Planning Commission can review this and approve it in the same spirit that you would a master sign plan, where you review deviations from the sign code. We've also added a provision that if a permanent building were to be installed, it would be compatible with the primary structure. That's not this applicant's main business model, but we wanted to retain a little bit of flexibility in case that were to become their model. We've noted that it must be compliant with the setbacks, as they were originally shown on the ODP, and that the location be as shown on Sheet 2, which we'll look at now. Essentially, this is the site plan that was created for the original healthcare facility. Some of the numbers on the bottom show the lot coverage and parking lot count, or parking space count. We'll zoom in just a little bit, and the, the red rectangle shows where the container's been proposed. It would take, it would displace maybe three parking stalls. The one thing that has changed since the packet was distributed is that we, the applicant has continued their conversations with electricians and with the property owner, and they've actually requested and identified two other locations that may work better, just from a, providing electrical service. So, those two locations are actually in the north, far northern end and far southern end of the site. They're shaded here in red. No, that's a change from what was presented in the packet. But they have requested that there may be an appetite for a condition of approval that would allow them to utilize one of these two locations as they finalize their work with the property owner, and again, determining how electrical service can be provided. What we've been talking to them about is the need to have that service not be overhead wires. As commission is aware, any new development, it's always a condition of approval, that overhead wires be undergrounded. That was done for this project, so we wouldn't want to add those back. And that is not an insignificant investment for a project and organization of this size. So, typically, the southern parking lot functions as MCPN staff parking lot. So, the benefit of this location is that it is a little bit sheltered from the clients sort of coming and going. The northern parking lot is typically the least utilized of the area. The property is overparked, so it can stand to lose those three spaces. Sort of anecdotally, the city actually has a relationship where staff sometimes has to park in this northern area if we have a, you know, heavy docket and courts or a big event here. So, we know that, that the loss of those three spaces would be fine. And with their limited customer pickup, we don't expect that there'd be any long-term impact on the site or on the neighborhood or surrounding streets. We did include a couple images. It's a hard site to photograph as well, just because it's so large, so a little bit of a bird's eye view. The two, the original location was in, was here. This parking lot is probably two feet below the sidewalk and street grade. It sort of drops down. It's a little bit in a hole. The alternate locations that we've proposed tonight are up here in the northern corner and then down here in the southern area. There's a transformer here, and this is a turnaround, so that's why it can't go in this specific spot. There's also a 30-foot setback requirement from 29th Avenue. There's no pedestrian doors or anything in this area, so I don't think it would interfere with the, the way the site is being used today. Couple more images. Again, one from, from the Wadsworth crosswalk, looking north. You can kind of tell from this image that the, the cars are at a lower grade, because all you're seeing here is, is the tops of them in the distance there. And then this is a view looking from 29th, from the City Hall driveway. So, if that were to be the location, you probably. Again, as with any application, we send this on referral. It's a limited referral in this case, just given the scope of the request. So, no concerns with Public Works or Excel. Building has communicated their requirements, namely that a permit's required, and that even with the shipping container, it would be required to be set to the ground in some way, so that, you know, if a plow truck or something were to hit it, it wouldn't be displaced. Excuse me. Ultimately, we are recommending approval of this amendment. It does comply with the intent of the outline development plan. It maintains the quality of the development, and it's not detrimental to the public welfare. There are criteria for the approval of an SDP amendment that are more specifically analyzed in the staff report. We recommended, again, approval of two, with two conditions, that it be reviewed through the building permit process and that the electrical service not be overhead, as I mentioned. And then, we'd be recommending tonight that third condition, that the applicant could finalize one of those two locations as they continue their coordination with Excel and the property owner. That's the end of my presentation. The applicant is here in the audience, if you have any questions of either of us.
Great. Thank you for that report. We'll start over here with questions. Commissioner Peterson, any questions?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions that just came up because of things you've added.
Sure.
First of all, on the, the development standards, the new paragraph in red, or the new listings in red, did those then become sort of standard standards?
That's a good question. So, these are written specific for this use, and it doesn't mean, for example, that they could then get a half-size shipping container to use as a shed. Is that what you mean?
Well, I mean, if, if somebody else comes in here and has a large parking lot and wants to put a, a container in it, do these apply to that container, too?
To other properties?
Right.
No, this is, this is very specific to this property, this parking lot, this use.
Okay. I mean, it's clearly customized for this.
Yeah, the, you know, the plus and minus of a plan development, you know, the way we describe to somebody who comes in and says, "Oh, my property's planned development." We say, "Well, that's actually a customized zoning document that's property-specific." The plus side is that we can be flexible for a use or a structure like this, where it's not typically allowed, right? Like, if they came and said, "We want to be in the Safeway Shopping Center," it's not, we can't have a shipping container elsewhere in the city. The downside of that is that it is very specific. So, if they wanted to make some sort of dramatic tweak, we'd have to go through an amendment process. These documents get recorded at the county, so they kind of run with the land.
I very much appreciate the creativity and, and the, and the specific application to the site. I just wanted to know if it was then generalized. The other question I have, which was also just added, is the, the alternate sites, the possible sites for the, the container? I think what you said was it's still sort of open as to where it's going to go. Are there traffic flow considerations at all? I mean, I have a preference, and that's the north end, because it seems the easiest to get to. Having been a member of a CSA, I know that there are certain times of the delivery period when things really stack up. And I would hate to have everybody sort of stuck in that, I guess it's the southern So, is there some consideration of traffic flow, or is this strictly where can the electricity go?
No, I mean, I think from the city's standpoint, that's certainly a consideration. There's probably pros and cons to both locations, but I'll maybe let the applicant speak to what they're thinking about the two.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
Commissioner Rome?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Commissioner Peterson, for the, the comment about the stacking space. I had the same question, so I will cross that one off of my list. The first question I had, and thank you for the additional two locations, because my understanding of Section 26, 625D III is it says, "Accessory buildings shall only be located in the side or rear yard," which the one that was originally shown is clearly not. That is in a front yard. And I have some concerns over that it clearly is not within the, with what the code says for commercial, industrial, and even residential, and that would this set up any precedences? Also, because of it having signage, I would imagine that there's a lot of businesses along Wadsworth that would love to have a front yard accessory building with signage advertisement on it as well. The other question I had was, there's a, a comment from Building Division that's stating that if a container design is utilized, it will need to be attached to the ground. Please explain that comment.
The Building Division has indicated that they'd need to have some sort of anchoring system, so that the container couldn't be moved or relocated or displaced if it were to be bumped by some large piece of machinery.
Okay, for, for electrical purposes?
I think just structural as well.
Okay, because I, yeah, because it's going to be electrified, refrigerating.
Right, yeah, that, too, given the electrical service would come from underground, so for probably both of those reasons.
I also would agree, I guess my quick comments on the three locations, the, my understanding is the one that's on the, along Wadsworth is in noncompliance with the city's code. The one that's on the south side of the building does not complement the, the architecture of the building. The obvious choice for me would be on the north side, as it has a great distance from property lines, and it also is facing sideways. And it is also has pine trees on, looks, I think the pine trees are existing trees on that north side that helps buffer from the existing residential on the, I guess the east side of that property on that other picture that you're showing. So, that would, that would definitely be a preference of mine. I have no, no further questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Dorsey?
I would just make a comment that the north side would probably be the only spot that it would be allowed. Inasmuch as this has to be serviced, it's got to be stocked also. Besides the shares that are being picked up through the week, I'm sure that there's going to be truck traffic and all to service this unit. And to be in front of the building on 29th just doesn't cut it, as far as getting truck traffic in there. I don't know if these are local truck farmers that bring the merchandise in or whatever, local growers of some sort. But it does have to be serviced, and the only way I can see it be serviced would be on the far north side there, where you, you could have ingress, egress off of 29th or off of Wadsworth, because you've got a curb cut there to get. off of 29th or off of Wadsworth, because you've got a curb cut there to get, you know, traffic in and out.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful, after questions, if the applicant can explain how their other locations are serviced and...
Okay, okay, that would be good. But I, having been in the retail food business, you do, I do know that you have to stock these things, whether it be a storefront or a, or a shipping container. So it's just one of these things that, it's, not that it's only going to be open six hours a week, it's going to be open more than that, because you have people servicing it. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Boss, any questions?
I do have two questions, and then I'd like to hear from the applicant, for sure. Could you explain the artwork, allowed, not allowed, and then what are the setback requirements for this type of accessory dwelling?
Sure, so the, in the, in a sign code, in any sort of standard commercial zoning, we make a very clear distinction between what is art and what is signage. And traditionally, the way it works is that there's any graphic that promotes a commercial activity is considered signage. So a picture of a eggplant for a produce pickup spot is considered signage. And on, on the planned development, what we're proposing is to allow that the murals not count against their signage if it's not the actual words or signed copy. It's a little bit of a double penalization to say, "You have to be painted, but you, but you also can't count any of that," or you'd have to count all of that to signage. So that's what's been proposed here. We shared a couple of the graphics of their locations elsewhere. Again, a couple images of, of vegetables and, and plants. In terms of the setback question, the minimum setbacks for the property are 30 feet from Wadsworth, 30 feet from 29th, 25 feet from the 30th Avenue front right away, which is at the very north. There's a sidewalk there that's city-owned. 20 feet from the eastern property line are the four setbacks.
So all three proposed spots meet all that requirement?
Yes.
The, when you talk about the no eggplant on the, well, you've got one right there that's got the eggplant on it, so that wouldn't be allowed per that downtown Golden one?
So that is how our standard sign code would work. But what's proposed in this specific amendment is that that, that the murals wouldn't detract from your sign allowance, so it would be allowed in this case.
That's it for now.
Commissioner Leo?
Yeah, I just have a question. Maybe I missed it, but how is this associated? How is it an associated use?
Just with the public health mission of trying to provide healthcare and healthy food options to the same type of clients.
But it appears to me that the people are going to be using this, they come and they pick it up and take it to another place. It's not sold on-site, correct?
So the way that it works is, you know, anybody could buy a share. They may have a, we can let the applicant speak to whether they have a specific relationship with the clients of MCPN in terms of how they market those shares. But whoever buys the share would then come to the site and take it home to, to their house. But it's not open like a produce stand necessarily.
So it really wouldn't be the people who are using the, the building for the medical services?
Right.
They wouldn't necessarily be the people that were being served by this?
Right, not limited to that clientele.
Okay, all right, that's, that's...
Let me give you another example I think we talked about in the staff report, but I didn't mention tonight. A couple years ago, when the building was constructed, another customarily associated accessory use was to have a mobile dental van, so, and a garage for that mobile dental van. The garage didn't ultimately get constructed, and I, and I don't know how frequently the mobile dental van has been there, but that was approved through an SDP amendment. So again, not necessarily serving the exact same people who are going into that building, but a complimentary use in terms of a providing, a public health focus and providing healthcare to similar type population.
Yeah, that's useful information, except that is still a related, probably the same people would be using that. This sounds like it's a, more of a wholesale use, seems to me.
No, so like, no, this is much more of a personal example. So I once had a CSA, and in two different times. One time, my pickup location happened to be a pizza parlor. So once a week, I'd pop in the pizza parlor lobby, and they had a cooler set aside, and I'd grab my eggs and leave. Another time, it was on a private property that I popped in once a week and grabbed produce and came home. But it's, it's always, the shares are typically a variety of sizes for like a single household or a family-sized share, but not something that's purchased and then resold by any means. So it's usually a way to connect a farmer and their produce direct to consumer.
Okay, that clarifies it a lot. But I also want, are they paying for that use of that property?
I don't know. So ask that of the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Weaver, any questions?
I was just curious, is GoFarm written into the, the planning document, or is it simply the use of being able to sell?
It's a good question. So GoFarm is not specifically written in. We worded it as a local food share program.
Okay, so it's just the association again with health, food, all that. Thank you.
I, I just had a comment on the artwork versus sign thing. I think, and I just want you to maybe clarify for this or confirm this analogy or analogous use here that I'm thinking of. If we think about the Sprouts development at 38th and Kipling, I remember when we were looking at that plan, there's a, there was a certain amount of required transparent building material facing each side. And I remember the discussion that one of the things that a tenant could do with that transparent area would be to face it or coat it with some sort of artwork, and that it wouldn't detract from the transparency requirement. Also, it wouldn't be counted as a sign, because it's not a sign for the actual business that's in there. Is that, is that understanding correct?
Yeah, so there, so as you can imagine, businesses like to sort of push that boundary of what is art versus sign. So for the Sprouts example, where we drew the line is that it had to be, the murals interior-mounted, so it's not as though it was painted. There still should be a reflection on the glass. There was the last time I walked by. They wanted to mount it on the outside, but then it completely voided any effect of a window or a reflection. At the time, I think, you know, it's a farm scene, so it's maybe one jump from farm to grocery store in terms of whether, what it makes you think of.
Sure.
Lucky's, oh, and I should add, so that project had a master sign plan, so I think we also addressed it through that. The Lucky's Market project at the corners, they did a master sign plan, and now I can't picture the front, but at one time, they had wanted to put in images of like produce or baked items, and we worked into that sign plan also. The maximum allowance for an image that sort of crossed that line of sign versus mural. So you're correct in remembering that we've had this discussion, specifically for grocery stores, actually, most recently.
Yeah, and I also was just recalling the different, making the distinction between a sign that advertises the business versus artwork that might allude to the products one could get there or the experience one might have there. And this, this seems to be sort of in that vein, which is why I brought it up. I also wanted to note, so since, since GoFarm is, and we can talk to the applicant about this, but GoFarm obviously isn't part of the organization that is the tenant for the building. It's more of a, a partner, as you said. So it's not necessarily a sign, if it is, the, the part that you would consider a sign, that being the GoFarm logo, for example, isn't necessarily a sign for the tenant that the development is really concerned with, correct? Okay. All right, any more questions, Mr. Peterson?
This fascinating discussion on signs. So is, is the, is the advertising or sign, whatever you want to call it, on the container charged against the signage limit for the clinic? Or is it, is it its own limit?
By structure.
Okay.
Good question.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for staff? All right, thank you very much. As the applicant here today, would you mind coming up? And I'm sure we have some questions for you. If you have a statement or presentation you'd like to make, you can do so as well.
Hi, my name is Lindsay, and I'm one of the employees at GoFarm. So first, just thank you for allowing us to be here today and talk to you guys about what we do and our shipping containers. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, okay. So just to kind of add on to what Lauren already talked about, just to give a little bit more light as to what it actually looks like at distribution, how it works with receiving the food and the traffic with people coming each week to pick up. I don't think the traffic is as large in scope as you guys think it is. We'll probably have about six, we're hoping to have about 60 people sign up for this first season, and not everyone picks up every week. So some people pick up every week and some it's every other week. So it's probably going to be around 40 or 50 each week, and then that is split up between the two distribution days that each last between two and three, or two and three and a half hours. So, for example, our Centura, our Vado location was new this, this previous summer, and we'd have between zero and three people at a time usually. There usually would not be more than two or three shareholders coming and being there at one time to pick up the food. So the traffic is pretty light, and there are, there are a decent amount of lulls within the two- or three-hour time period, too. So, so we never really witnessed an issue with the parking issue or with having too many people there at a time. In terms of receiving and, you know, a truck coming in to bring in the food, this actually is not going to be one of our hubs, since we do have three other locations. We'll have two of the other locations, the two in Golden, actually, be where we receive food from farmers. And the farms that we work with are small, local, beginning farmers, so some of them are even just coming in their car and giving us their food. Some of them have, you know, a larger van, but I, I think we only have one farm that comes with a larger truck. Actually, they don't even bring one of the large trucks. It's still kind of just like a van. And that only happens on Wednesday mornings. And then we will take our van and pack up the food from the Golden container and bring it to this location on Wednesday afternoon. So it's really just us driving in our van and unpacking into the container. And then when distribution is over, we will drive the van back to Golden. Also, because of the size and the number of people for this first season at least, we'll probably set up the food inside the container. So you can see in that picture on the right, it's kind of set up like a farmer's market. And we might do this in later years when it gets a little bit bigger. And again, I mean, our, our biggest location right now, it's about like 130 people, so it's not that much significantly different, but it is a few years down the road. So the first year, the first two or three years even, we'd probably just set up inside. And so people, we'd have like a little welcome table right outside of the container that we only set up during distribution, and then people can come and, you know, sign in. And then sometimes you might have a food demo or just a sampling, so that people can try an item. And then they'll walk into the container, pick up their food, and then head off. So in terms of how it works with the flow, it's not a big concern for us. And in terms of the location, we also like the northern spot, but it kind of, it's dependent on the electrical costs and what we can make work. So that's why we were proposing those two options, because we're still in the process of figuring out which, which option would be affordable for us. I'm trying to see. In terms of partnering with MCPN and kind of making sure that we're serving their patients, in a typical CSA, most people sign up, and you have to sign up before the season starts. But with us, because we work with and support a lot of different local farmers, we have a little bit added flexibility, so people can sign up throughout the season. So at our other locations, our partners a lot of times refer their patients or their customers to us, and they'll say like, "Oh, you..." You know, if they're trying to get their patients to eat healthy foods, they, or eat healthy food, they can just easily walk outside, and they can see what we do, and then we can help them through the process of signing up. And it does have to be online, but you can sign up at any point and start receiving the food. It's essentially like a prorated amount, depending on how many weeks are left in the season. And we do try to make it a, a partnership with whoever we're, we're located with. So there's opportunity for a partnership to grow, or we could do more programming with MCPN and their patients around access to healthy food. And so that's always in the back of our minds, that we want to be able to serve their patients and the residents as much as possible, and have an impact and be able to support local farmers and bring more access to healthy food to the area. In terms of the paint, we try to make them as pretty as possible, so hopefully that's a positive thing. It hasn't been painted yet, so the sign of the actual logo, that, that varies, and we can make sure that it's up to code for whatever that needs to be or look like.
Great, okay, thank you for that information. Questions from Commissioner Weaver?
Could you talk a little bit about your, your structure, your fee structure, and just how you address all different people in? I'm, I'm familiar with GoFarm's model, and I just think it's important for everybody to hear how you all, why that's a good place also for, for your model.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Yeah, part of our mission is to make food more accessible, make affordable, healthy local food more accessible. So, yeah, we have our basic structure for how much each type of food box costs. And then for people who have limited resources or limited income, we do try to make the food as affordable as possible, and we do that a few different ways. The first is by accepting SNAP and Double Up Food Bucks. So SNAP is the new term for food stamps, and then, which not every farmer's market or grocery store accepts for produce. So we, we're somewhat unique that we can do that as a CSA model. And then Double Up Food Bucks is a program through Livewell Colorado, a nonprofit, that essentially gives SNAP customers double their money on Colorado produce. So if you have, if you have a SNAP EBT card, you can use that to pay for the produce, but then also get two for the price of one, because of the Double Up Food Bucks program. In addition to that, we offer a 50% off discount for people who are not, maybe not eligible for SNAP or not signed up for SNAP, but who still should really qualify for lower-priced produce and who struggle to access it on their own, whether that has to do with cost or transportation. So we have grant funds that have allowed us to offer 50% off to those in need. And then we also do, part of the, the potential partnership that we could do with MCPN is to offer additional markets or food boxes at lower costs at an ongoing basis. And those, we have a lot of programs right now that address those needs, and they all look a little different, but there's, there are a lot of future opportunities, too, with MCPN and GoFarm to work together to have markets that are generally lower in price.
Great, thanks for that information. Any other questions, Commissioner Weaver? No, okay. Commissioner Leo, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, is this unit refrigerated?
It is refrigerated, yeah. So that's how we keep all the food fresh. And so the, how it works is, it'll be refrigerated all the time, but we'll come Wednesday, most likely Wednesday mornings, and keep the food in there until probably on Friday, when if someone didn't come pick up their share or we brought a little bit extra, if there's any food on like Friday afternoons, we'll take that and we'll donate it to our other programs or to a food pantry, or if it really can't be eaten, then we'll compost it. But yeah, so it's really, the food is just in there for a few days, because we get new shipments every week from our farmers to make, to give out the freshest food, but it is refrigerated, so it stays safe.
Is there any noise associated with the refrigeration? Is there any noise associated with the refrigeration? Can you hear it from outside the unit? Oh, sorry. Can you, had it too far away. Can you hear the noise outside?
No, you don't hear anything.
So, there is no noise related?
There's no generator.
And you mentioned shareholders. Do people have to pay to become a shareholder?
Yeah, sorry. In CSA world, shareholders is synonymous with customers. So, when you sign up for a service, you're signing up for a share of the crop. And so, we call you a shareholder, but all that means is that you've signed up for food for the season. And that's our customers, or sometimes we call them participants or shareholders.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Commissioner Boss, any questions?
Yes. The size of the container is 20 feet long?
Yes.
Okay, and that, and you're limited to that? There cannot be a 40 footer?
No, yeah. And that we already have the container in possession, so.
Okay. And then, it's your typical look of a shipping container, other than the artwork that you would have disguising it? And so, it's a regular eight foot tall and so wide?
Yeah.
And then you serve out of the front end or do you have a?
Yes.
Will it be raised up off the asphalt?
Is there like, there's like a three inch platform or, yeah, it's like pretty level. Yeah. But yeah, it, on, there'll be like a, just like a, they're a little different, but just like one side of the container will open up so that it'll open so that people can actually walk in.
Not the end, which is typical of a shipping container, but more in the middle of a side?
No, it'll be the end.
The end?
Yeah.
Okay. And those will be shipping container doors where you ratchet them up and pull them out? Okay. And so, your footprint is going to be 20 feet by, what, eight feet?
Yeah.
What more spacing are you allowing for you, somebody being outside servicing the clients, put up a tent for the weather?
So, because the food will most likely be set up inside, we'll really just have a little welcome table outside. So, like a, at most a four foot table. One of those like plastic.
And then someone from Grove Farm is attending to all of this?
Yeah, that's a good question. Sorry, I didn't mention that. There's always going to be at least one Go-Farm staff member there at all times when it's in use. So, we'll probably get there an hour or so before distribution starts. Kind of set up the inside, put the table out front so that we can start welcoming people in. And then cleanup is pretty minimal since it's all inside. So, maybe like a half hour after distribution ends is when the staff person will be there. But there might be two people there at a time. But really, it doesn't take up much space, space more than the container because we're not setting much up outside.
You did talk about possibly expanding that so that it wasn't inside the container?
In a few years, if we do need to get to the point where it's outside, it would probably just be like, what we do now is do two 10 by 10 tents right next to each other. And everything always fits underneath those two tents. And with how the container will be set up in the parking lots, it, the tent would kind of be like right next to it. So, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be taking up more parking spaces. It would just be filling the rest of the space.
All right. And so, then you get that permission from the landowner or from the city?
Yeah.
To expand in any more?
Yeah, those would just be like little 10 by 10?
Temporary.
Canopy tents. But that's kind of speculative for a few years from now.
Right.
That's, that's as much as it would grow because that's what our ones look like now that are four or five years down the road.
Is the electrical that you're concerned about at any of the three spots new electrical or are you hooking into something that's existing?
We'd be hooking into something that's existing from MCPN.
And all three sites have something existing there?
Yeah, that's why it's kind of like, where can we make it so that connection is affordable for us is what we're trying to figure out, but it is already existing.
And then it's all underground? Okay, thank you. And I do prefer the north end.
What was that?
And I do prefer the north end. Thank you.
If I could just address one more thing that Ms. Boss brought up. So, the tents on the outside would obviously require property owner permission. They wouldn't need permission from the city in addition. The temporary setup of the tent is what we would classify as a produce stand. And after the ODP got approved for this site, we adopted a variety of urban agricultural provisions. So, we allow produce stands, temporary produce stands on all properties in the city of all zone districts. So, they would have a business license for that permanent structure. And that's more of what we're here for today is the permanent structure. But the temporary tent setup, so long as it doesn't interfere obviously with traffic and safety, would be permitted sort of regardless. Yep.
Commissioner Dorsey, questions for the applicant?
I just was wondering, you'll haul away, you haul away the trash and spoils after your two-day food delivery?
Yeah, so fortunately, we don't actually have a lot of waste because we're only ordering food for the people who have signed up. And that's kind of inherent in our model to reduce food waste. But if there are any leftovers or any small item that does go to waste, it'll be removed right away. And we have, our other locations, we have some composting programs that we're setting up. So, we'll take everything from this location and move it to our other locations in a, either a dumpster or a compost bin.
Okay, so you won't need a dumpster or anything there?
No.
It'll just, you'll haul it yourself?
Yeah, we don't, we don't use a lot of materials week to week. So, we ask people to bring their own boxes or bring their own bags. And because we're not receiving from the farmers, we don't have a lot of like, or because we're not receiving from the farmers at that location, we don't have boxes laying around or anything. And the only trash or compost that we'd really create would be from little food samples, which would amount to like a tiny little plastic bag of waste each week. So, it's very minimal.
Very good, thank you. No questions? Any questions for you? Okay. Okay, yeah, and then I've got one.
Which end, east or west, would your door be on?
I don't know if that's been solidified yet. East?
East is the north location.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question about the sort of, just thinking about this container being there, you know, throughout all the seasons, all year. How long is the typical CSA season?
That's a good question. Ours is 20 weeks long. So, it goes from the second week in June to the last week in October. And we also started a winter share this year, which goes from January to April. So, there is potential to use it in the winter too, but no set plans for that just yet.
Okay, great. Any other questions for the applicant? Yeah, so the? Yeah, so the container, the container obviously stays there year round. And then it's staffed whenever you have produce for it in season.
Yeah, and it'll be locked up whenever it's not in use.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, thanks very much for your insight. Did we have anyone from the public sign up, Lauren? Oh, don't worry, even if you didn't sign up, we'll, we'll make sure you get a chance. We're just going to check the list first. All right. Did you have a comment or question? Yeah, just come up and address it to us and we'll get it answered for you. If you could state your name and address, please, when you come up.
My name is Louise Kanjar. I live at 3055 Webster Street.
Will you just raise your, the mic just a little bit? Thank you. Oops. Sorry.
I think the Go-Farm model is wonderful and I think it's, it's great to bring it in to the city. However, if you're one of the residents on Webster Street where I live, we will be looking at this container every day, 24 hours a day. All of you commissioners think that the north side is the best side. I guarantee everyone that lives from 32nd to 30th on Webster would not agree. If, if the location site can be fixed on Wadsworth or on 29th, the neighbors would certainly appreciate it. Because it's, you know, we made a lot of concessions the last several years when the Olinger family home in the trellis was, well, you know the history of this location in Wheatridge. And we'd really like to keep it as it is. Please put the container not on the, on the north side, please. And I, I can't speak for my neighbors because I'm the only one here. But it's, it's an important concession for the city to make. And I think Go-Farm would welcome either of the other two sites. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to, go ahead and come on up, sir?
My name is Don Edelen, E-D-E-L-E-N. I live at 2935 Webster. I'm not sure if you're all familiar with the way that's situated over there, but you're going to be putting this container within spitting distance in my backyard. The Go-Farm idea is a, sounds like a pretty good idea. I could live with that. There are a few things that I've got some concerns about. Number one being the north end of that. I'm not sure y'all are aware that there is, on the north end of that, it looks on the drawings like a large area where those trees and everything are. The city has an easement through there. We went through this once when they started talking about putting in the, well, even before the clinic, the hospital over there, the, when Miller was wanting to develop that. And that came out at that time that the city had that easement for 30th Avenue. And I think if the, if you all looked at that, you might find that that's not going to be as far back away from the street as what you all are thinking. The other thing, if you are going to put something up there, I would urge the possibility of fencing that north end in. This is definitely going to impact, we have a 91-year-old lady that lives right there. You're going to be putting this thing right next to her backyard. And this is not going to work well. She's a little nervous at her age. I was concerned when we first started hearing y'all talk about the refrigeration end of it. I would like to request that you put off making a decision on this until the neighbors that are going to be right there backed up to this thing, at least we can have a chance to discuss it amongst ourselves. I would like to see, I don't know how to say this without insulting somebody and I don't want to. But honestly, I want to see something in writing from the city that is restricting what is going to be allowed to be put in there, how big it is, and when it's going to operate. The lady from Go-Farm, and again, I don't want to insult you ma'am, but we started out discussing a container, half-size container with 50 or 60 people a week. And be, within five minutes, we were discussing the possibility at some time in the future, a couple hundred people setting up as a farmer's market type thing. I think, I don't know what all the city was involved in when they were doing farmer's market over there in front of the Safeway by 38th Avenue. But I suspect there was probably quite a ruckus raised about that.
I hate to interrupt anybody in their comment period, but I just want to clarify, I believe she was referring to down the line, the attendance being around 130 people, so about a doubling. And not actually a farmer's market, but a tent that would, a temporary tent that would go out in front and then be taken down. So, I just wanted, I just want to, I just want to make sure where you're framing the context of your, of your discussion.
Well, this is what I'm saying. This whole thing basically has hit us cold. The reason I'm here tonight is that I got a letter in the mail that y'all sent. And we had no idea what's going on, what was going to be involved. And I'd like to discuss it, get some of my neighbors and discuss it. And see if we can work out something equitable for everybody involved. And that's basically, if you, if we can do that, I think something could be worked out where everybody would be at least satisfied with it. So, that's about all I got to say.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to, from the public like to speak? Okay, come on up. And just as, just a reminder on our process, what we'll do is we get, we get public comment then when we are, when the public hearing is closed and we're discussing motions and so forth, we might ask some clarifying questions of staff or the applicant to clarify some of the questions that the public might have addressed to us. Okay, hi.
Hello, my name is Lauren. I live on Webster in Wheatridge. And my concern is I don't think that Go-Farm is an idea. I don't think it's a good idea. I think it's something that we don't need in the neighborhood. We've got a medical building. I think it should be just as it is, left alone. We don't need one of these and why would you ought to put one there? So, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public who has a comment or question? Okay. With that, I'll close the public portion of the hearing on this case and entertain some discussions. Yeah, go ahead.
So, Mr. Chair, quickly, I just went off the scale on the drawing and it appears that from the property line going east to the edge of that curb is about 75 feet. And going west from the property line, and this is approximately to the house, is about 60. So, 60 plus 75 to where that storage would, would, container would be. One thing I might suggest, there is looking, from where I can see, I can clearly see where the easement was, at least for the street, unless there's some other easements beyond what the street right of way was. I'm not so sure there are because there's a row of existing or probably existing trees that generally go up and down, so east-west. So, I would say it is possible you could plant two to three evergreen trees on the north side of that storage area. At least two to three for buffering purposes. There's, there appears to be a, a large amount of landscape area.
Yeah, that's I think a valid point. Actually, a question for staff, a question I had kind of related to that would be, is there a grade change from the northernmost boundary, kind of right in the middle of that right of way, down to where the parking lot area is where that northernmost location is being contemplated?
May I interrupt for just a second? Could we have someone on the map using a cursor so we can actually talk in real time about?
Sure.
Where these measurements are, just so?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks, sorry to?
No, that'd be helpful.
So, from what I can see, the property line that goes east-west, coming south to the back of curb where the north, yeah, to there to there, that's 75 feet. back of curb where the north, yeah, to there to there, that's 75 feet, going off that scale on the drawing, and then going west to the house edge is 60 feet. So from the property line going, yeah, west to where those houses are, that's another additional 60 feet. And then there's trees, this one is, there's some existing trees on the west side, or the north side of where that container might go. Yes, that showed it very clearly there. So it appears that you could definitely put trees to the west of the existing trees, evergreen trees, for screening purposes. Two to three trees.
Maybe want to make that a condition of whatever motion we have, if that's the placement that, that's decided, is that kind of what you're contemplating?
Yes, yes, adding some, there's hardly any trees on that, and there's a, that is a very large landscape area in width.
Yeah, actually, I walk and ride by that area a lot, actually down through Webster Street. And so I understand the very residential character of the neighborhood. And I understand that that northern area is a nice buffer, but it is, I think it could be buffered more if we had some sort of, some sort of larger landscaping there than just the green, green area. There were, so there were, there were some concerns over, or there was mention of city plans to extend 30th Avenue. Is that, is that, can you address that, what the current thinking is on that?
That was discussed at the time that the building was constructed. So at that time, there was discussion about whether this development should be responsible for a connection here to complete the street grid. That was not well-received, and ultimately, there's only that pedestrian connection. So there is public right-of-way there for that sidewalk or an easement, but there's, there are no plans to connect that street by the city or the property owner.
Okay.
And in answer to your topography question, the home to the north, sorry, the site sort of falls away this way, so the home to the north is a lower, is lower in elevation than the site. And then the site also sort of falls away as it gets away from Wadsworth. Not dramatically, you may not even notice it when you're standing there, but it's about 10 feet from Wadsworth to the back of the site, and then maybe three or four feet sort of heading this way.
Let's see. Just as far as public noticing, there were some comments about that. This, it sounds like, what, can you tell me what the public noticing requirements were for this project?
Sure. So there's no neighborhood meeting requirement for an SDP amendment, but in advance of the public hearing, we sent a letter notice to every property owner within 300 feet of the property boundary. And then there's two yellow signs, one posted on 29th and one on Wadsworth.
Okay.
And I did, I should have mentioned this earlier, too. We didn't receive any written comment. I did get two phone calls just inquiring for more detail. Didn't end up saying one way or the other whether they supported it or not.
Okay. All right. That's what I have in my notes. Any of the other commissioners have questions or clarifications for staff, based on the comments that we, that we received from the public, before I ask for the applicant to come up and make some clarifications?
I have a quick question. So in a motion, would we put a condition, this might be a question for you, would we put a condition of placement? Is that what we're discussing, or is this, the placement is these three options, period?
So currently, there's no condition related to the placement, only that it be consistent with the SDP, which in the packet is the location on Wadsworth. So if there's any contemplation of an alternate location or multiple locations that should be specified in a condition of approval.
And that has not, okay, so that is what we would, that's what the conditions would be? Okay.
So, yeah, so one condition would be, you know, either mandate one place, or say one of, one of these three places is fine, but it could be any of them, depending on what the applicant determines is feasible. You could add a further condition to say if a particular condition, if a particular location is selected, say the north, northern side, that if there's some tree screening or something that we feel is appropriate, we could make that a condition.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify.
Commissioner Boss, question for staff.
The gentleman mentioned a little bit about postponing so that they, as a neighborhood group, could come together on this. Would that be something that after anything that the commission does tonight, that they would have conversations with Go Farm and express their concerns, and then Go Farm would work with the neighborhood, as opposed to us limiting this tonight for them to do that? How would that be handled?
I mean, any communication between Go Farm and the neighborhood, the city typically tries to stay out of those conversations, so...
But that could come after tonight's meeting, and then it would just between the goodness of the neighbors and the goodness of Go Farm.
I also want to remind us, remind all of us that we are recommending approval or denial. The city council will have the final say, and so there's another intermediate step here, isn't there?
No, for a specific development plan, it stays at planning commission, so you'll have a final decision tonight.
All right. Sorry, I was misreading, I was misreading the motion, the recommended motion, so that's my mistake. Yes, Commissioner Peterson, why don't you go first?
This is just a question about conventional neighborhood measurements. What's, what's the, I know this is hard to characterize, but typically, what's the side lot to side lot, side of house to side of house measurements in this area of Wheat Ridge?
I can tell you exactly.
That would be good.
So you're saying in the context that...
Lots of them in this neighborhood on Webster are almost all the exact same, and they are about 90 feet wide and 90, they're square, 90 by 90.
The lots? But what about the distance from a side of a house to a side of a house?
Oh, the setbacks between?
Yeah, the setbacks, the side yards.
Those vary typically anywhere from five to 15 feet on an individual lot, so the home separations are probably around...
10 to 30 feet, maybe, 10 to 20 feet. So...
The way that we measure for the notification comes from this property boundary and goes out radially, so we have a giant oval around this, 100 feet as a radius.
Okay.
So it would hit...
What is it, what is it, house front to house front, then? Looking across the street? What's the typical distance from the front of the house to the front of the house across the street, front yard?
Probably 90-ish feet. So setback in this own district is maybe 25 feet, and then the street, so I guess 90-ish.
So, so the distance from the nearest house to where the container would be placed is actually greater than the distance across a street, or to the house next to you?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to get a way to compare these distances, because it's easy to throw around numbers and perceptions of things, and, yeah. So the neighborhood context makes that distance really quite a long distance. Is that correct?
Yeah, relatively speaking.
Okay.
Commissioner Olin.
So the, so just to, I guess, verify, so the, the first location along Wadsworth, does it comply with just generally the city's code, what it says for accessory? Is it, is it sitting generally in a, is it in the side yard, or is it in the front yard?
Yeah, so you made that comment earlier, and typically, you know, it's easier when we look at a residential lot, the front yard is only the front setback. And in this property, the setback from Wadsworth is, I think it was 50 feet, and that's roughly where this building is. So it's not really in any, any specific yard if we were just looking at the setback, because it's outside of all those setbacks. Because this is a planned development, those standards in that section don't even really apply, because we can dictate the requirements for this specific property. So it feels like it's in the front yard because it's so visible and exposed, but technically speaking, I don't know that it is, because it exceeds the front setback.
Okay, but so if it wasn't in, if it was just in a typical commercial, it wasn't a plan, I guess you're saying it still would not be definitive whether it's in the side or the front?
Right.
Is it the face of the building?
Right. So for commercial, I think there's language about it being either visible from the street or between a building and a street. We have a lot of issues getting accessory structures on corner lots, but I don't have that specific code section pulled up. So the, you know, again, the sort of fortunate thing for these guys in this case is it's a planned development zoning, where we can look at this a little differently.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to mention just that the, the address on this is, it's addressed on 29th Avenue. So, I mean, I know it's different on a, when we're talking about commercial property, you know, but if you were to think about front yard, backyard, I mean, it's kind of a backyard.
Well, it's a corner, it's actually a corner, so it's got two, I live on a corner, it's got two kind of front yards.
Yeah, oh, I know. I know, too. It's a lot of fun, all those setbacks and all the special rules. Okay. Any other questions for staff before we, yeah?
What type of fence, what type of fence runs along the back of the homes on the west side of Webster?
It's a solid fence, and I believe it's wood, and I believe it's six feet high. It's a little taller towards 29th, where it's on top of the retaining wall associated with the drainage structure.
And is that standard through the whole block?
For the whole length of the property.
Yeah, the whole, right.
Then it was replaced and built when the, when the medical office building was constructed.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I think we'll have the applicant come up and maybe address some of the concerns, too. Thanks. Could you come up and just answer a few more questions that we might have? Thank you. So Amanda, do you have any clarifications you want to give from the applicant and all, Janet, Vivian, Emery?
I just wanted to mention that you have the, on the north side, you have the parking, which the container's going to sit down on three of those parking spaces. But you have a bump out. Why couldn't a pad be put down for the container, leave those parking spaces where they are, and set the container on a pad on that bump out, which is just west of those parking spaces? I mean, I'm just, now you're even further away from Webster. You haven't taken any parking spaces, and we're, you know, and your electric service could be put in once your pad's put down, or when your pad's put down. Just asking.
Thank you for that question. My name is Eileen O'Urke. I'm the founder and CEO of Go Farm. And I, when working with the facilities manager, that did come up. They didn't want to disrupt the landscape there, so they preferred that we be in the parking spaces.
All right. Fair enough. Scott, did you have any clarification, clarifying questions for the applicant?
No, I, I think, I understand. I think the other issue, too, would probably be, as far as that landscape is going to be soft ground, you'd have to excavate and make it ready, whereas the parking lot is, it's already paved, and it's a fairly hard surface.
Sure.
And I'm sure that if MP, MPCN had issues with them taking three spaces, then they, they would suggest it, because there is a large area, there's a lot of area where you can put that storage container.
Sure. Richard, did you have any clarifying questions for the applicant? Could you turn on your mic, Richard?
On the north end, where everybody seems to have put you, there are 12 parking spaces, and at the moment, the tentative hypothetical location of the, the container is on the west side? Is there a reason it can't be on the east end of those 12 parking spaces?
No. Other than, you know, the electrical cost could be...
You don't actually know where the, where the cable runs underground, right? Or do you?
Well, it will run through Conduit to the...
The light poles?
Parking.
Yeah, see?
Oh, okay.
There's a light pole there, one there.
So what it does is it just adds the length of the wiring.
It doesn't make a difference if you're here.
Yeah, it's expensive.
Yeah, it's, just looking at the, where the light pole is, it doesn't seem that it matters whether it's on the east side or the west side of those 12 parking spaces.
The wiring has to go from the building to...
Oh, from the building, not from the light post? My electrical consultant here said light post.
But it's probably to the light post that we would be using.
Okay. Okay.
So you, you've heard some of the, some of the public's concerns, questions. Is there anything else you'd like to add in addition to the clarifications you've already made?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, really, our mission as a nonprofit is to increase access to healthy local food. We're, we're trying to be an asset to the communities that we enter, and we really don't want to be a hindrance in any way. We have some locations right now, and in the parking lots where they sit, we really don't notice a difference when it's during hours and when it's not during hours. There's a decent amount of cars coming in and out for services there anyway, and it's not, it really doesn't feel any different, other than there's a person there who's allowing people into the container to get their food. So we, we really are going to try our best not to get in anyone's way, but just be there for healthy food access. And we do have winter shares going on right now at the downtown container in Golden and at the Centura Arbada container. They happen every other week, but anyone is welcome to come and check them out. That's basically what it would look like, which is just one of our staff members standing outside with a check-in table and a smile. So that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, great. Thanks for, thanks for addressing some of our concerns and questions, and I think we will, you can go ahead and be seated, and I think what we will do now is entertain a motion and then maybe have some discussion, once that motion's put forward. Think about when you're making your motion, those conditions, in terms of location, in terms of sighting, in terms of landscape screening, anything else you might want to think about. Could I, could I ask that the members of the public, if you, if you want to have a conversation, you're certainly welcome to go do that outside, but we're conducting a meeting. You can, you can do it outside now, or you can wait until the meeting's over, okay? Thank you.
I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-18-28, request for approval of an amended specific development plan providing for an accessory use and structure related to local food distribution on property zone, planned commercial development, and located at 7495 West 29th Avenue for the following reasons. Number one, the specific development plan is consistent with the purpose of the planned development, as stated in Section 26-301 of the Code of Laws. Number two, the specific development plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of the outlined development plan. Number three, the purposed uses are consistent with those approved by the outlined development plan. Number four, the purposed use, the proposed, sorry, the proposed use and structure does not diminish the quality of the project and is not detrimental to the site or vicinity. All responding agencies, and number five, all responding agencies have indicated they have no concerns with the proposal. And number six, the specific development plan is in substantial compliance with the criteria for review with the following conditions. One, the new structure shall be... One, the new structure shall be consistent with the ODP and the SDP subject to staff review and approval through review of a building permit. Two, electrical service shall be provided underground and not overhead. Three, there are three proposed sites. If the north site is selected, landscaping needs to be addressed for site issues. Buffering, thank you. I think I'm done.
Second. Okay. Discussion on the motion. We'll start over here if we have any.
I was doing okay until we got to condition number three, although I, I agree with it. I mean, I agree that that's the best spot. I'm hesitant to sort of force Go Farm into a particular situation. They're already worried about the cost of electricity. I know what trees cost, and so if you start asking them to plant trees or build a fence as well, I'm just worried that it's going to make the whole project go away, and I think the project should not go away.
But it's only if they choose that north location.
I know that, but it, it seems to be a site that everyone likes, with a few exceptions. So I don't want to add a disadvantage to that north site, and it seems like landscaping is a disadvantage that's added to it.
You don't think that would be the property owner's responsibility if that, those trees are buffering or landscaping?
Well, I, I don't wish to speak for the property owner, so, no, it seems like the property owner might have to deal with Go Farm, and they've reached some sort of agreement, but I just don't want to set up a set of conditions that makes Go Farm at a disadvantage for this particular spot.
I can, I can assure you that the cost of the trees is going to be nominal compared to the cost of electricity. It will be far greater for any electricity, whatever they do, than the cost of trees. The trees is, it's going to be, it's going to be small.
But it's still additive.
Yeah, but it's, it's going to be such a small, it's going to be a small number, you would be surprised what the cost of pulling underground electricity, it's going to be, it's going to be expensive.
No, I understand it's going to be expensive. Plus my, the discussion we had earlier about sort of common distances inside the neighborhood, it doesn't seem like it's that close. It's, it's a greater distance than house fronts, it's a greater distance than side yards, and, and so, I mean, it's like, how many rights do we have as property owners to make sure that the, the area around us is exactly the way we want it? How far does that extend? So I'm not sure I want to stick them with that.
I was here for, when this actually went through, I was on the planning commission, and, and I do remember the, the neighbors were very vocal, and as the, one of the planning commissioners, I, I did vote kind of against what staff had said. They wanted to have the street run through 30th and, and supported the neighbors not having that street connect there. But I do feel that if the container were to go on that north side, having a couple evergreen trees would mitigate that, that problem, and the, the distance and width, this is not typical of what I usually see for commercial. Usually commercial, you might have a, maybe a 15, 20-foot buffer area, and you have one row of trees, and that's it. And then you're putting up a, you know, a three, four-story building next to it. That's not the case. This is 60 feet on one side, 75 on the other, then you have that entire parking lot, and then you have the building. There's, there's a very large setbacks, and I feel that if that's the question, the case, then put some evergreen trees in there, and we will mitigate the screening problem. The other thing is, I want to, I've already discussed this, but if, if staff feels that the shipping container, where it was first proposed is not an issue of accessory dwelling setbacks, then I support that. I just want to make sure that we're not going down a path that a lot of Wadsworth businesses decide that, well, you put a shipping container with advertisement along Wadsworth, kind of right along face of that building, I want to have mine, too, and everybody wants to have that. And then we have all these, for better or for worse, we have these shipping containers with advertisements, not only up and down Wadsworth, but maybe along Kipling, and so forth and so on. And so, it, it, like I said, if staff, it feels that it's justified and it meets the code, then, then I'll support that location as well. And to be honest, the, the advertising that's on it, it's, it's going to be a nice mural. It says Go Farm, you know, it's like, I think we all love to go farm. So it's, it's a great, I think it's a great advertisement. But I think, apart from those two things, I look at circulation, and I know that putting it on the north side is going to be a much better, in my opinion, a much better circulation. If I was MPCN, I would consider the locations of where this thing could go, and I would think that the closer proximity to the building is going to be the more va, more valuable parking space. And so to put, put this container in the far north side, the furthest away from the building, I would think that would be the most ideal for them from circulation. And then I, I feel like you don't have to worry about stacking space where the original, the original one was. The, the south one, for me, is not even on the table. I think that's a, I think that's just an awful, awful spot, next to the building on a dead-end parking, with people trying to come into that dead-end parking and get in and out quickly. I think that's just an awful, and it shouldn't even be considered. That's, that's my, that's my comments.
Commissioner Dorsey, do you have a discussion? Commissioner Voss, anything to discuss? Commissioner Leo?
Yeah, initially, I was thinking about the neighbors and listening, of course, to all of the neighbors who spoke. But a nine-foot fence should far exceed the need to be looking at that unit. That unit, I'm sure, is eight foot high, maybe?
It does, now, keep in mind, it does, the grade does slope downhill, so the folks on Webster are, are down a little bit.
Well, that's why they have, I guess, the, the three-foot retaining wall and a six-foot fence. So I, I, I'm visualizing that and not seeing how that would really affect.
Commissioner Weaver, any discussion on your motion?
Yeah, I just want to take a moment and talk about what these, what these things look like, because I've had a lot of experience around the Go Farm containers. And, and I, I think everyone in their mind is sort of thinking farmer's market. It's not a farmer's market. This is a very, very small activity, and it's actually an amazing community generator. I think it's really, really exciting that Go Farm picked Wheat Ridge as one of their next locations, and I think we should feel pretty lucky that they did. I've been watching what they've been doing in Golden, it's pretty incredible. This is not like having donation boxes down at the, at the, at the shopping center. These are, I encourage you to go see them when there's nobody there, I encourage you to go see them when there are people there, because the experience is clean, it's cool, it's well-done, and I, I think this is a really positive move for us, and I think it's great. And this is part of Jefferson County's move to create access to, to healthy food. I'm saying this as a farmer, local in Wheat Ridge. And they also work with local producers, so one of, part of their mission is to work with local producers, and they do supply from local Wheat Ridge farmers. So I'm really in support. I, I want to find the right location, and so that it's, it's, it's happy for everyone, but I think this is going to be a real asset, and, and not a, not a detriment. So that's what I wanted to say.
I just want to throw in my comments as well. First of all, Go Farm is a great name for Wheat Ridge, because, as you know, Wheat Ridge High School is the home of the farmers. In fact, I would encourage if, if the container shows up there to watch out around homecoming time, might get a little graffiti, an ERS, and an exclamation mark on the end of that, you'd be supporting your local high school. I, I regularly walk and ride by Go Farm's containers in, a container in downtown Golden. I think it's very attractive, it's a very nice way of both packaging and marketing food, accessible food. It's a, it's a, I think, a really nice model compared to some of the other CSAs that I've been a part of in the past. I think it's, it's, it's a really nice idea, and I love the fact that Wheat Ridge is something, is a location that they're considering. I think the partnering they're doing with, with their partner there is, is great. I think there's a lot of synergy that, that can exist between those folks. And I also think that in terms of placement, if, that third condition, since it, it keeps the options open for those three particular areas, it allows some flexibility for the applicant, for the, for the landowner, and also allows for, I think, some dialogue with the neighbors, too, in terms of having a, having a conversation maybe between all three of those parties. So, so as far as I'm concerned, I would support that. I, I'm sorry, I started talking, and I think I saw you, you had something else you wanted to add? No? Okay. Any, any other comments before we vote on this motion? All right, let's take a vote then, please.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
All right. Want to thank everybody for all their thoughtful comments and input on that case. Okay, our last case of the night, case number ZOA-18-05. That's an ordinance amending Article Four of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to regulate the creation of flag lots. Can we hear it from Lauren? Yes, Ken?
Can you hear from me?
Okay, great.
Here. So, yeah, we, we've talked a little bit about subdivisions earlier tonight. This is a proposed amendment to Article Four of Chapter 26, the subdivision regulations. And as the planning commission is well aware, any amendment to Chapter 26 does require a recommendation from the planning commission to city council. The city council, a public hearing for this is scheduled for February 11th. So just a little bit about flag lots. It's certainly come up as a conversation with the commission over the years, if you, as you've considered flag lots. And actually, oddly enough, I think back in 2015, you asked us to, to have some discussion with city council about whether we should further regulate or prohibit in certain locations flag lots. We didn't end up taking any action in that regard, but it's come full circle. We just handed out a graphic of what a flag lot is. I think most of you probably know what that is. The, the notion is it's a flag pole lot, so the pole portion connects out to the street as a point of access, and then the actual developable portion of the lot is the flag, if you will, and sits behind the main lot, which is typically fronting on the public street. So there's a number of, of those in the city. They're often seen in locations where properties are relatively deep, deeper than they are, or much deeper than they are wide, where the lot size may far exceed the minimum lot size for the zoning district, and there's an opportunity to create a flag lot that sits well behind the main structure that sits at the front of the lot. Our zoning code treats flag lots in a special way. We allow them, but don't encourage them, and they're allowed, subject to three conditions, and those three conditions were listed in your staff report for reference, and we can talk about those if, if they're of interest. Last year, we approved an administrative two-lot subdivision in the Bel Air subdivision off of 38th and kind of the center of town, and that, that flag lot met all three of those criteria, and it was approved administratively by the community development director, myself. The, that, that lot was, that, that approval garnered some attention in, in the neighborhood. There were certain members of that community that didn't think that that was in character with the area. Those folks started engaging city council at meetings late last year, and council scheduled that for discussion on the agenda on a number of meetings in, in the latter part of, of 2018. The results of those conversations and, and formal actions are twofold. One, they did place a 90-day emergency moratorium on the approval of any additional administrative subdivisions in the Bel Air subdivision that include flag lots. So it was a very narrow emergency moratorium. That moratorium is in effect until February 23rd, I believe, that's within a day or two. Secondly, they, they asked at, or they directed at, at study session in December, that staff draft an ordinance that would require that any subdivision continuing a flag lot that could otherwise be approved administratively, require it be processed as a minor subdivision. And a minor subdivision requires a planning commission hearing, public hearing, it does not require a city council, a public hearing. Minor lots, or, or minor subdivisions are typically just four and five-lot subdivisions, but this would carve out a special class of minor subdivisions that include flag lots. So we have drafted such an ordinance, and it's fairly simple in nature. The only other change that, that we are recommending in the draft is that we, there's some language in, in the section in Article Four that pertains to flag lots that implies some discretion that the community development director has in determining whether the, a flag lot is kind of appropriate from a design perspective, and that, in our opinion, is fairly vague language in practice. We've really just enforced those three criteria, and if those are met, we've approved administrative subdivisions that include flag lots. They're, they're not frequent by any regard, but they do, they do certainly come up. We do have a number of properties that meet that kind of spatial description that I described, which is they're, they're much deeper than they are wide, and they far exceed the minimum size, minimum lot area for the zoning district. So there certainly are opportunities come up, and so this, I mean, this, this would have an impact, to the extent that it would require that planning commission hearing for a certain class of subdivision that is currently reviewed and approved administratively. And I'd be glad to answer questions.
Okay, great. Let's start on this side here with Commissioner Peterson. Any questions?
Can I fly two flags from the same pole?
[laughing].
I mean, I could see a scenario where you might be able to do that.
I think you could. I think they would, under those criteria, you'd have to have two poles, so you'd have a big fat pole that would be 50 feet wide, I think.
Well, what if, what if I wanted to fly one flag above the other flag?
You can do that, and, and...
On the same thing? With a 25-foot?
It sometimes depends on the utility district, so there's some code language about access and what the width of the access is. In one scenario I can think of, we have one pole that has a 25-foot wide access easement that serves two lots, but in a different area of town, utility districts require a portion of that lot that's getting serviced be at the street. So we've seen it in both ways, where there's like parallel poles and parallel flags, or a single pole for multiple flags.
But, but that then depends on infrastructure and not on planning decisions?
Right. I mean, the, the code, we care about the access width, and then sometimes the utilities will have an additive requirement in terms of what that pole looks like and who it belongs to.
Okay.
Scott?
I don't think I really have any, any questions, just some comments. I think it's good that there's going to be some type of hearing process. I, I do have, I've actually watched some of the city council meetings for this particular case, and it seems that the, having notices, it was probably the biggest, kind of the biggest issue. I don't foresee that there's going to be a lot of properties, we're so landlocked in Wheat Ridge, that, that, that this is really going to come up that often. I really just don't see that happening, so I definitely am in support of this.
Emery, comments, questions?
I have no questions. I do support the new ordinance.
Vivian, any questions?
Well, this question probably doesn't speak directly to the ordinance, but I think it spoke to the whole process over there in Bel Air, was that the question of why is there any lot that is under administrative review as opposed to the planning commission and, and city council? So can we understand why...
then city council? So, can we understand why? Because that seems to be the problem, administrative versus two lot, three lot, six lot. And maybe I just don't understand the whole concept of why that's even there.
You're certainly correct that, that certain members of the public, and I would never speak for council members, but certain members of the public certainly were concerned, why would there be any administrative approvals? And, you know, I think we've made a, you know, conscious choice to make more things administrative, not, certainly not everything. Many things, obviously logically necessitate a public hearing. You know, we process probably five to ten administrative plots a year, and they're just, they're often very, very minor oversized lots that you split in two. They still meet all their minimum lot width, minimum lot area. They have adequate access to the streets. They have access to utilities. There's really just not much substantive review. So, as we've talked with council at, at multiple study sessions on this topic, we've certainly thrown out there the fact that, you know, you could make all subdivisions, at least minor subdivisions. In fact, before we amended the code in two thousand fourteen, that was the case. The only types of administrative subdivisions were consolidation plots of, where two lots were combined into one, and lot line adjustments, where you're just moving a, a lot line but not creating any lot. So, we did change when council approved the full, full repeal and replace of Article Four in two thousand fourteen. That's what created that, that narrow category of administrative subdivisions, the three lots or less. That said, they've talked about it recently, and at least their consensus has not been to get rid of administrative subdivisions, but just to get rid of administrative subdivisions with flag lots.
Okay. Janet, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Amanda? I'm old enough to remember a time when we had to deal with a lot of very small subdivision cases here. And I was, I was very happy when a lot of them became administrative, because as you know, it takes a lot of time to prepare a case and to hear it and to go through it. And it was nice to have that time freed up for more substantive cases. But you're saying here with this, with these flag lots, it's, it's, you're expecting this to be a fairly rare occurrence in terms of, you know, coming up.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to put a number to it. I think we're talking right now, we've had a pre-up with at least one flag lot. So, I would picture, you know, it wouldn't, but some of those might be subdivisions that included enough lots that they, they would have come here anyways. But, you know, you might see three, four, or five a year at the most, I'd think.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And the, the whole, you know, it's, if, if every, if, if, if a particular case meets all those, you know, three, you know, must-pass requirements, you know, it's, it's a quasi-judicial type of, type of situation for us. So, is the real, you know, is the real thing that city council is hoping for is that, that there is some public notification and a chance for the public to, you know, say what they want to say and make their comments? I mean, if, if it meets all of the requirements, it meets the requirements. You know, to me, that's what, that's what administrative review is great for. You can look at it. You can tick, tick the boxes, and you can say, all right, it's, you know, there's, there's no, you know, it, it does what the code says it should do, so, so we should proceed. Is it, I don't know. It's, it's just, this probably isn't, this isn't a good, fair question for you guys, because you, you're not the city council. But I was at that study session when the city council was talking about this, and it seemed like the need for the public to really vent about something, or at least be notified about something, was the real reason a lot of people were upset. So, in that case, I, I'm certainly not opposed to this, but, you know, I'm, I'm not really sure what other purpose it might serve, other than to, you know, just let people know what's going on, which is fine. That's totally fine. I'm not, I'm just being a little cynical. Forgive me, it's late. Vivian?
Yes, I think you either spend time administratively with public notice, or you spend time in city council and study session with hot breaths down your neck. So, what's the choice? Do it right the first time and not have to deal with the angry mob, or-
Concerned citizens.
Yeah.
Concerned citizens.
Oh, concerned citizens, excuse me. So, I, I throw that out there. How does a flag lot, is that what you call it, differ from an ADU that would have to have some kind of a access into the backyard? How does, how are those different?
Yeah, good question. We don't currently allow accessory dwelling units. So, I mean, certainly you could, I suppose you could develop a flag lot in a manner that if, if you retained ownership of both lots, that, that could practically function as an ADU, but really they're separate concepts.
So, a flag lot is two ownerships?
Yes.
So-
Or certainly could be. I mean, unless someone created a flag lot and retained the second lot for whatever purpose.
Right, and then that would be an ADU.
Well, it wouldn't be an ADU. I mean, we really don't allow ADUs. It would just be a, they could build a second dwelling there and use it however they want. It's on a, it's on a legal residential lot. They could keep ownership and rent it out. They could keep it as their guest house. They could, but they, they couldn't use it for things that aren't allowed by code, right? So, we're talking about things like ADUs. We're talking about short-term rentals. I mean, those things aren't allowed in the city right now.
And unlike an ADU, a flag lot is not like a secondary lot? So, the flag lot still has to meet the same standards as like the front lot in terms of area and width? So, there, in terms of the developability and the ability to own it, the front lot and the flag lot are sort of equal in that way?
Mm-hmm. I see the difference, thank you.
I, I have one comment to Ms. Voss's notification. One thought I had was if you could create some type of standard, and it could apply to anything, where you could say, okay, we're going to do an average of whatever. It could be the average lot size. We're going to do a radius, and then that's going to be the average. And then you're going to add a certain percentage, like a variance on top of that. And then if it exceeds that number, there's an automatic hearing. So, it could be for anything. But that way, it would be notification. It could just be a lot split, not a flag lot. But that way, if like, if, you know, if everybody's got a big lot, and all, and even though they met the code and they can split the lot, and they have the width, administratively, my understanding is that the neighbors may not be notified, correct? They wouldn't be notified if it met all the requirements. It'd be administrative. The neighbors wouldn't know the lot was split until it was split.
So, maybe to go a little bit too in the weeds, but this is some of the conversations that we've had with council, and it sounds like some of you have maybe, you know, heard some of those. But, you know, we consider generally subdivisions to be what we call ministerial actions, which means to Chair Buckman's comments, I mean, you kind of check all the boxes, and if you check all the boxes, you should approve it, right? So, it's, that's the spirit in which we made certain subdivisions administrative, because there's just not a lot of discretion there. In that same spirit, our public notice for subdivisions is a little different than it is for rezonings, right? I mean, rezonings are substantive of nature. You're making a big policy decision to say, you know, do we want to change the allowed uses and the development standards for what you can do on this property, right? That has real impacts. But a subdivision, they're, they're just complying with the zoning that's already there, right? Minimum lot size, development standards, minimum lot area, minimum lot width, et cetera. So, in that spirit, there's no neighborhood meeting. So, there's no pre-meeting before the development application's made, unlike what there is for many other land use applications, including rezonings. And there's no notice for administrative subdivisions. So, there's no notice that goes out to the general public, like adjacent property owners. There would be, under this new paradigm, for the minor subdivision. It's at three hundred feet for, from the perimeter of the subdivision that would get notice of the planning commission public hearing.
For, for the flag lot?
Right.
Right.
For any minor subdivision.
Yeah, for, for any minor subdivision, okay.
Right. Any minor subdivision, which is, are the ones that come to the planning commission.
So, even if there's a large lot somewhere, and they want to subdivide it into two, that would be a minor subdivision that would require a public hearing?
If, if that, that large lot had a flag lot component.
No, not a flag lot. I'm just saying-
Oh, no. There's still, there still would be administrative subdivisions. So, it would be administrative subdivisions for three lots that don't include a flag lot.
What I'm, what I'm suggesting would be, it could be anything. It could just be a lot, and they subdivide it. And because that is now not within that average of what the neighborhood is, it triggers a public hearing or some type of notice to the neighbors, as opposed to, the only thing it does is it just, it gives notice to the neighbors, like, hey, the guy next to you is subdividing, and, and there's now going to be two houses instead of one, where everywhere else in the entire neighborhood, there's only one house, which is kind of what it sounds like happened with this flag lot in the Bel Air neighborhood, that the grievances were, I mean, I kind of thought, I looked at that, I, I walked by that area, and I know very well that the grievance was so much that we had no notice. They had no idea what was going on. Because it could have been, if it, if it would have been, my understanding is you could have built another structure behind it on the same property. It could have been a very large garage with a loft up top, and that would have been acceptable. But it was because of, right, a large garage with, with a loft, like a storage-
Not entirely. I mean, we have fairly restrictive requirements when it comes to the height of accessory structures. So, you could get a small storage lock. It couldn't be like occupiable space, or to Vivian's, it couldn't function as an ADU.
It couldn't be thirty-five feet tall?
No.
Okay.
But that's kind of the parallel that we give, you know, and we have this discussion with some citizens, is that because the zoning is in place for a subdivision, your property right is there. So, your zoning is in place to allow a garage, so we don't notify your neighbors when you come in for a building permit for a garage. Your zoning is in place, your property right is in place to subdivide, assuming you meet those standards, which is why we don't notify for an administrative subdivision.
Richard?
Just, just a quick question. Is the twenty-five-foot pole included in the minimum lot size?
It is.
So, so the functional lot is actually a smaller lot, right?
It depends. It's a, it's a great question, and let me give you an example as it pertains to Bel Air. You know, when we review subdivisions, and when you review subdivisions, it's, there's more than a couple boxes that are checked, right? I mean, obviously, minimum lot area, minimum lot width, adequate access to public streets, access to public utilities, I mean, those kind of core things that you consider. But in the case of the Bel Air lot, and really in any lot, is we, we want to make sure that the lots are buildable, right? So, so we would, in, in the case of the Bel Air lot, we had them depict, you know, what all the setbacks would be for the, the buildable portion of that flag lot, and demonstrate to us that it was a reasonably buildable area. So, if the flag was so big that it, it created almost, it met the minimum lot area requirement because it was such a long flag, we'd have the property, the applicant demonstrate that whatever the buildable portion of that flag lot was buildable, or we wouldn't support it.
So, so some of it's subjective?
I wouldn't say that's subject, it's somewhat subjective.
It's somewhat subjective.
Yeah. I mean, if, if someone came in and, you know, showed us that the footprint would be for a house that could be fifteen feet deep and eighty feet wide, we'd probably say that's, I mean, subjectively perhaps, but that, that's not a buildable lot.
Okay.
And we don't want to set ourselves up for them, you know, coming in and immediately requesting variances, because we wouldn't support a variance for something that's just been created.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, that's all very illuminating to me, for sure. Other, any other questions? Okay. Motion time. Someone want to make a motion? Oh, public hearing. There's nobody in, in here, so I'm going to assume nobody wants to give any comment. Thank you, though, for reminding me. Okay, now it's motion time. Anybody want to make a motion?
I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-Six to regulate the creation of flag lots.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, let's vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
All right. Thank you. Any old business? Any new business?
You go.
Yes?
Yes, that was one of my new business items. So, we do, let's see, we will have a planning commission meeting on February seventh. We don't know yet about the second date in February. And then the March twenty-first meeting will include a study session for the NRS. That's a Thursday. That's just with the planning commission. We haven't, we don't, it's too far out to know if there will be a case and then a discussion, or if that would just be a, a study session. But March twenty-one for NRS.
Cool. All right, that'll be fun.
And just maybe another update on NRS, since you asked. So, we will have an online, and the public is watching. There will be an online survey that's coming out in February. Those questions and that topic is being developed right now by our consultant and steering committee and staff. There will be a study session with council that same week on March eighteenth. So, and the goal, again, is to have a final report in the May-June timeframe.
Nice, all right. Okay, anything else from anybody? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
All right, thank you all.